Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think we'll kick off the apologies regarding the screen side of things. But we are recording, so the benefits for the recording, welcome to the Town Council Heritage and Town Events Committee meeting being held in the council chambers on Thursday 13th of October. It is 10 o'clock, so we will commence. Welcome to you all. First of all, we'll deal with the first item on the agenda, which is declarations of any discloseable peculiary interests. Please do signal if you have any interest. Obviously, if anything should arise during the course of the meeting, hello. See if anything should arrive during the course of the meeting and please feel free to indicate and declare onwards. We go to 37722, which is apologies for absence. David, have we had any? No, thank you. I think we've got a full house, actually. Thank you all. So we then move on to the minutes of the last meeting to confirm the minutes of the Heritage and Town Events Committee meeting held on 4th of August, which was received by the council on 27th of September as a true record. These have been circulated previously. Are there, assuming page one, page two and page three? The action points will be picked up on the next agenda item. Are there any issues or am I okay to sign those as true and fair reflection? Super. Thank you very much. So we then move on to 379, which is actions from the previous meeting. They all look like they belong to David. So over to you.
Okay, so the the first one, which was the request to contact the media manager at Breckham District Council to have an ongoing dialogue so we can improve our media presence. Hazel, our engagement officer, who controls all the social media and website, et cetera. I mean, she has regular meetings with Nathan over Teams and I think she's had a couple of one-to-ones, face-to-face. So I think all things are going really well. As we mentioned in venues communications yesterday, our social media presence is improving all the time. It is being reflected in some of the attendance events and things like that. We are drawing from outside the area and with, as the feedback sheets that we're putting out, we we can track and analyse those, so all is going well. But yeah, so I think she's on top of that. So we will, we will keep that going as a, as a matter of course. The second one is about liaison with the ABL and Omack. At the last meeting suggested that we talk to them about the service sheets. Helen is, sorry, Kerry is liaising with the Royal British Legion at the moment and she is putting together our involvement together with theirs for the Remembrance Sunday. I'm not too sure where we are with the service sheets because Mac was thinking that we would produce them and sell them on the day to try and raise funds. I'm not sure whether that conversation has been had yet, but it will be because that's on Kerry's agenda. In terms of cost for marketplace events, that will come up as an agenda item. I'll just skip the next one just for a sec. So civic officer tasked with purchasing wooden clock. I think Stuart went and visited Skavina in September and it was indeed purchased. And I think you presented it when you, when you were on your visit, Stuart. So I think that one's done and dusted. Committee priorities, again, we are going to have that as an agenda item. Questionnaire for public consultation. So we are waiting on the decision for NHLF with our multidisciplinary team bid as part of the overall heritage master planning. And we should, that should be imminent and hopefully we'll have a successful announcement very soon. Fingers crossed. And part of that initial process is that we have a series of events and consultation events and this will form part of that. So again, it will take place. But we don't really want to duplicate things because we know the Setford public are sometimes exhausted with consultation after consultation. So we think it's best to do it all in one hit. In terms of the committee officer to ask, get the heritage master plan bid, I think the town clerk has done that and circulated it to to all councillors. And again, as I said, that first stage decision by the NHLF is imminent. So hopefully we can keep our fingers crossed. Going back to the heritage trail, we are having trouble, Stuart, because I think you brought it up at the last meeting, trying to get that map. Because what we want to do is, is also digitise it to try and reduce costs as well. And so we, we need to try and find out how we can get that. I don't think the guys who do our media stuff can lift it from the trail leaflet. So we need to try and make sure that we can duplicate that. And I'm not sure about the costs at the moment. In terms of a hard copy of the leaflet, we did discuss that we were only going to have a small amount of those. And as soon as we get the map, then we can, we can at least get those done and distributed through various different outlets, such as RT Room and other outlets throughout the town. So it is in the process, but it's just a case of would be installed by the map. But we'll, we'll get that sorted open in the near future. So apart from those ones that come up in the agenda items, that's, that's the updates.
Open floor. Yep. Okay. And in that case, we'll move swiftly on to 38022, which is the budget review to receive and discuss update of Budget 2223, which is this current year.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, I'll, I'll each hand over to you.
Yeah. So I think, so I think we're, we're, we're pretty much on track. In fact, the budget shows us being significantly under, underspend. But I've, you know, I've only recently seen this myself. We are going to have a process of the officers getting early meetings with Majana, who is Alan's new finance officer. So we can keep up to speed because I'm just looking at some of the significant underspend, certainly in civic events. I know, and the comment is that perhaps there's a time difference, perhaps the events haven't taken place. Well, civic events usually take place and are pretty much done by the end of summer. So there is some small amounts of catering costs and things like that, but it's not going to be too significant. So we're doing pretty well. Town events, again, Alan's comment about this might be a time difference. Actually, we did classify the Jubilee, which is underneath, which is £3,142 as a town event. Remember Jubilee was one, Heritage was another and Christmas lights switch on. I think there might be a few small costs to add to town events through Heritage because that's just been completed in September. And so it should leave around about £5,000 in the budget and that slap bang on the allocation that we put to Christmas light switch on. So in terms of town events.
Copy of this.
I don't know. Do you?
I don't think so because everybody's currently looking at Nick's figures.
Oh, sorry.
Really, really interesting.
Sorry. Well, actually, actually, if you, no, no. Again, I didn't think the screen was, was not going to work. So.
Apologies.
Yeah. So so the, the thing is that we are fairly well on track. So there's nothing too much to be concerned with. The biggest spend in our budget is town events, which is £12,000 a year. And what we've, what we should have left is 5,000. And you'll see, if you look at next years, you will see an allocation of different events and that's what we put to Christmas lights. So as long as we hit 5,000 allocated budget, we're on track in terms of that. So I don't think there's anything that's a scare. In fact, we should have a small underspend by the end of the year if we, if we, if we carry on the way we are. So I don't think there's anything to worry about there.
Councillor Hollis, please.
And that small, small underspend, obviously, go back into the script budget.
Um, it could, so so in terms of carrying funds across, it can, it can only be requested if it's to do with that same thing. So, so for instance, if we had an underspend in town events, we could ask whether we could move some of that money across into next year for a specific town event. But you can't just put it in there and just hoping that that's going to boost those, that, that's not the.
And that's actually part of the year-end process because obviously we can't do that now because, yeah, things can change. So that's always part of, there is also the movement to reserves should we so choose. But that will come back to this committee at the appropriate point in time. Councillor Cannon, please.
Now, I was just going to say, as it's the, the King's Coronation next year, can that then, because we, we was thinking of the, you know, the injects for town centre and could that go towards that?
So I think when we have our next meeting, which is, well, the next meeting is in December, so in February, all our town events will have finished because we'll have had Christmas light switch on. So it's probably best to look at it in February to see whether there is any underspend in that area. And we are going to talk about town events for next year and that's something that's going to be spoken about, the coronation. We've only just been told it's the 6th of May of next year. And it may be useful to, to move somebody at least into a reserve if we need it.
I thought we had to do serves by November. No?
Well, that's only if you're requesting an increase.
That's the project budget. So that is the actual precept setting and projects budget. Obviously, should things come up in between those times, then that's always a separate issue and is reflected in the policy. Councillor Wright, please.
Yeah, I think talk about that aspect. We need to make sure we've got some money there to do something in May.
That's an forthcoming agenda item, so.
But I was also going to ask about the, in here, David, we, we talked about future proofing this room. Did that expenditure come out of this civic budget? No, no. Because obviously I'm conscious we've got two more councillors coming in May and we need to get some prices for them.
No, there was an allocation of money that was put into refurb in this room, decoration, some of the additional framing of past mares. And there is another one that is going to go on that wall just by the exit. So again, it's future proofing it. But one of the things that the town clerk is, is constantly bugging us for is the extra leaf to be sourced to, to allow the two extra councillors. So again, it's, it's in the schedule and I think there's, there are funds there. I don't think, I know there are.
Also, we talked about where the radiator is to create seating, to give you that extra row of seats.
Yeah.
To, to, if it's not out of this one, then obviously.
No, it's not out of this one.
But it is a civic type event that the expenditure that we need to make sure we do get in place because May is coming around fast.
Yeah.
So the focus on this agenda item is this current year financially. Are there any questions on this current year financially? Okay. Okay. So I will move on to the next agenda item, which is 38122, which is Merrill Events. To receive an update of the Merrill Events calendar. Yeah, done stuff.
Yeah. So I, I haven't got any updates from Kerry, whether she was hoping that he was gonna give a quick update.
It's a little bit silly to duplicate an agenda item when it's always on standard agenda item on full council and you get a full report. If there's anything you want to ask about, I'm more than happy to answer it at this point in time, but do stuff. Went to Bunga yesterday.
I did miss broadcast. I did listen to it, but I couldn't do it very well. I was just like, so I overstepped when.
To screen, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was very well attended. There was, they'd have six twin towns. Slowback, Ukraine, Germany themselves, the Germans themselves and Ukrainians. Here's Slowback turned up for a couple of days, but it was very difficult to communicate with them. And the Germans said that they did speak German, but chose not to. So there was a little bit of a barrier there. And obviously the Polish, you know, they, a number of them do speak English. It's difficult for us to, but they're very good hosts and we went around to a number of places, the factory, vineyard, community park, an event there which we participated in. They're very keen to do more with us as a twin, as I said, but obviously we've not had a visit over there for quite a few years now. And obviously Covid's been in there and they came over here about six years ago, probably yours, the last time we saw them. But they are working quite closely with Hert because of the Ukraine refugee situation. But also some AEs has been pushed from her through screen. And so a bit more of a dialogue than we do and it's very difficult for us to, how can we get relevant things happening? They're, they're looking for community groups here to get involved, obviously with the Twinning Association ceasing. There's no point of contact other than the civic links that we have here. The swimming garlands between Hertz and this have happened and that's a possible area that we could invite them to come along. I think the chess thing goes on. The man was talking about online gaming as an aspect. We do have a Polish school in, in town now, so if they do come over, we can try and build some links there. But we all need to think outside the box, how we're going to, you know, do twinning in the future. One of the things we did say in the last meeting was let's try and set it in context first, why we have twin towns and what benefit they are to us. And I think when we get a new website, that'll be something we put an aspect of, you know, the twin towns and how they're built there. But I think we're all open to ideas going forward.
Anything further on that agenda item, please? No, in that case, we'll move on to civic and town events again in this current year. We have the upcoming civic event in terms of the reception after Remembrance Sunday on the 13th of November. And you would have all received your invitations as councillors for parade and then after. And then obviously we have the Christmas light switch on coming up on the 2nd of December. David, what would you like to add?
The only thing I would just like to reiterate, because there is an event when councillors first arrive at the Guildhall on the 13th of November in the large corps. So I think Kerry's outlined it, but I'll just reiterate the fact that you do need to go to the council chamber to robe up. Then there will be teas and coffees for yourselves and the VIP guests in the Guildhall tea room as usual. And then you will form up in the tea room onto the porch and then parade out as you usually do onto the marketplace. So what we will, will do then, because we need to keep that event fairly safe and private, we will then secure the doors. And when you finish the events on the market square, you'll return to the Carnegie for the reception. And this year, what we've agreed is rather than have any sort of, it will be open to the public. So obviously we are limited by capacity, venue capacity. But, you know, there won't be this issue where we've had before where people wanted to come in and then we've stopped them because they haven't had a prior invite. So it will be coming on first served. Obviously councillors and VIP guests will be included. But if we have any space and members of the public decide that they want to come along, they're more than free to attend. So hopefully it will be a more, you know, nicer atmosphere. There'll be no one that's going to be turned away at the door and things. And the Carnegie is a bigger venue as we've, we've already discussed. So hopefully we can do that. So, um, so Kerry's just finalising those plans as I mentioned earlier. The upcoming Christmas light switch on, again, we are starting to sort of firm up the details. This year's theme is Christmas movies and there will be a lot more entertainment and activity at various different locations around the town. The town, the market square being the main location as it will be where we turn the Christmas light switch on. We've got a good uptake for stall holders for our Christmas market, which is really encouraging. And we have also a couple of sponsors that have stepped forward to support different areas of the town in terms of creating those special themes. And I know, I know the light cinema are very keen to get involved now because they've heard about the movie theme and they want to make sure that the Riverside is, is, you know, a critical part of it. So they're going to be linking in with various Christmas films that people can go and watch. The idea, in the past, people do come down and support Christmas light switch on. Thetford always comes out when there's a celebration. But the, the real challenge is how can we keep them in the town centre for longer? So it's a bit more of an event. So people come down at five o'clock. Can we keep them down for a good couple of hours, maybe three hours? And that's hopefully what these additional activities at various different locations are going to do. So.
Open floor for discussion, please. On basis of nothing coming forward at the moment, what liaison are we doing with the local shops, retailers and businesses in the area?
Yeah. So Katie is also talking to shops in terms of how they want to dress their windows. We are, we are talking to Breckham because we want to know whether they're going to do a trail. And if they are going to do, usually they do a reindeer trail, can we tie in with the retailers and them to, to, to talk about dressing the window and also linking with their trail reindeers? If they're not this year, then we will, we will organise a trail ourselves. But again, we want the, they want the shopkeepers to, to actually, you know, get involved in and, and for them to understand that it's not all taking place at the market square. So it's, you know, it's going to be linked from the town bridge all the way through up to the market square. So it's Riverside Walk, King Street, Market Square, and then the Riverside on the green area. So it's the, you know, hopefully it's the whole town centre.
Yes, Councillor Cannon.
So Santa won't actually be out that year, is he?
So Santa will be and he'll be concentrating more on spending time at various different locations. We're not doing a meet the Santa experience. We're leaving that for the other days of the weekend. But he will come in by river as usual. He'll spend some time along on the, on the green. He'll spend some time at the Riverside Walk. He'll spend some time at King Square and then eventually get to the marketplace and then spend more time at the marketplace after Christmas light switch on. So he will be out and about.
Can I just stress then that when you, when you do the posters, you say.
Where they are walking.
Be walking about, but if you want to visit Santa these are the day.
Yeah.
But, you know, so it's really big because people will expect, because we've always had Santa on the same day as the light switch on. And I think, you know, they say, oh, never mind, that's not there, you know, you can't go.
No, and I, and I, and actually I think on Christmas light switch on, that's a really good point. Because actually, when he transfers from the River Sleigh to the more traditional sleigh, the lads have made a great job in designing and building that with all the lights. So there will, so the sleigh will be on the market square. So people can get on to the sleigh and have a photo with Santa and things like that. So it's, he's out and about, he's more, rather than tucked away and only children who come in can see him at that time. So I think it's, yeah, that's an improvement in itself, I think.
Anybody else, please? Yes, Councillor Wright.
Do you know if the hoardings still be on the, you know, in the council?
New question, well asked. Was speaking to the team literally yesterday and got a sneak peek inside. They are optimistic and hopeful, but there are a couple of issues that are beyond their control at the moment. But they are very, very much hoping and they have, and the landlords have been made aware of our Christmas light switch on date. So, yeah, ideally that will be open and I have to say it looks stunning.
Maybe they could dress the boards as the cast, something to do with Christmas decoration.
Due to be noted, we'll share with them, should that be needed. But I think to be fair, they're fed up with the hoardings being up as well and want to showcase all the work that they've done and the investment they've done. So they're really, really keen to get it down. It's just a case of when. They've got a couple of challenges that they're facing at the moment, which are outside their control. But yeah, I, I actually looked at the shop front yesterday and it looks absolutely stunning. It really does.
Reassuring. If you're having the dark love, the people just went round and created some graffiti up in the area. I just wondered if you'd lit, lit your white paint on the Argos shutters, it would just help out on the.
The Argos property is still in lease and the rent is being paid by Argos and Sainsbury's. Your lobbying needs to be there and not with the landlord.
Red, but nothing. We, we do services. We couldn't just really get it stolen suddenly to the government.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on remembrance or Christmas? I have to say that the remembrance has been quite pushed from myself because I wanted to be more inclusive and accessible. There will be the usual teas, coffees, hopefully amazing cake and biscuits. And then obviously if anybody does want, feel the need to have alcohol at lunchtime, please support your Royal British Legion. Because, yeah, there are other places to get it and actually it'd be nice to be able to support other local businesses as well, rather than replace them. Any other questions on that one? In that case, we'll move, we need to move on.
Yeah.
Yep. So we're on to, we've done this year's, we're now going on to next year's town event. So on to that one. So this is absolutely the appropriate point. And as soon as the news broke that the 6th of May is the coronation date, I flew up an email to David going, right, we need to add something else in. So I think at this point, it's the thinking process of the how, the what. The challenge very, very much is, as we've already spoken, David and I, that it's a Saturday, there's a market. Is there going to be a market on? Are those market traders going to want to be there? And that's obviously a discussion point for David and the team to liaise directly with those traders. But it's very, very early doors. We've had no information coming through as yet because obviously those plans are going into place, the, the date's been set and, you know, the palace are, are doing their planning. So obviously we, we stand by to stand by should there be anything required of us on a civic basis. But it might be worth, you know, in terms of marketplace events, us thinking about what can we do for our community to enable them to celebrate the coronation should they wish to do so? So I'll leave that filtering whilst I hand over to David.
So just taking that out of the budget or proposed budget. So it was a case of, we agreed at the last meeting that our town events would comprise of a schedule of events for the marketplace throughout the, throughout the sort of spring, summer, early autumn. We would then designate Heritage Festival in September aligned to Heritage Open Days as we've done this year. So that's usually around mid-September and then Christmas light celebrations over the weekend of the 1st, 2nd and 3rd of December. So again, the, the request was to try and get some relevance around budget in terms of those events. So we've basically looked at £5,000 for the Christmas celebrations, which is what we're allocating this year. We feel that, well, depending what the theme is for HODs, and we won't know that until springtime. We, we feel that we could probably deliver something in addition to HODs. And HODs are those open day, free open day activities where lots of different local attractions get involved. So it's, it's a reasonable event anyway. We're just putting the icing on the cake. A thousand pounds is, is more than enough for that. So it leaves us with £6,000 out of the current £12,000 and we're not proposing necessarily to have to put that up. That was before we heard about the coronation date, but that's a separate conversation. So we've allocated £6,000 for various different events throughout the, the spring, summer. So the team are really keen to, to do a Eurovision party, not my cup of tea, I must admit. But they really want to. They're getting lots of feedback from people to say that, you know, they really enjoyed the music event at the Jubilee. Can we have more of that? You know, so we asked them what kind of things and they said, well, literally you used to do the sort of night markets. Even if you take away the traders, let's just do some sort of food and music type event. So we've looked to try and allocate four of those in the better weather months, or we hope they're better weather month, months, July and August. Eurovision is Saturday, the 13th of May. And then we will have a, what we've classed as a seaside special for four days in August. So we've, so the, there is ongoing plans to keep improving the market square. And we do want to put a temporary stage in between the Guildhall and the shambles. And it's going to be a reasonably low stage, very similar to the one that we use for the Jubilee music event. But what we're hoping to do is to have a sandpit. But what we're hoping to do is to have a sandpit underneath the top layer. So it could be used as a stage, but if we need to, we can unscrew it and it's a sandpit. So in our seaside special vision, it's the beach. So then we can do little puppet shows, we can get some carousel rides, we can get some candy floss and things. So for four days, it's literally like many cities and towns do around the country, it's your seaside brought to a town centre. And then we'll have music and in the evening, just like you can. At the, at the big seaside resorts, there's usually entertainment on the end of the pier. So in the evening we'll have some music and entertainment and, and that kind of thing. So it will be over four days. We're liaising with the market because whichever way you look at it, someone's going to be disappointed in terms of the market. If we run it from Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. We have to integrate the Saturday market into, into the seaside special event and we do need space. So, so that might be a bit of a no-no. So it might be that we, we kick it off Saturday evening with a music event and do Saturday evening, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Tuesday's more flexible with, with the market, it is at the moment, who knows by next year. So that's the plan, we want to, if we're going to make the effort to, to do all, all of what we were proposing to do, we want it at least to be a four. Or maybe even a five day event. Always dependent on the weather, but we think that might be something the, the public really want. And then we're, we're already doing some Halloween events this year, so we'll replicate Halloween for next year. But that is what this committee is in charge of in terms of town events. In terms of the market square, there's going to be lots of other smaller events in partnership with different organisations. For instance, we did hold the Macmillan Coffee Morning quite recently. And supported Chiltern's who organised that every year. I'm really pleased to say that they beat their record and I think it was 2,180 something, I think, something like that. But they, they certainly were over £2,000 raised on the day. So lots of different little activities as well, but in terms of a town event. This is pretty much the start of the process. It's not to say that if we make these events really. Well-supported and we can generate some income, we can reinvest them into some other smaller events. Yeah. Any thoughts?
So obviously this committee asked, versus a smaller event, I believe that's been delivered and presented to you. And obviously our priority too, that we identified at the last meeting was to create an exciting and varied programme of accessible town events. I believe this is a really good start on that process and, and thank the team for that. Over to you guys. Yes, Barbara.
I'm really glad that this steampunk is, this didn't been repeated because it was a small event and I hope it's going to be bigger. Because I really enjoy it, I put the tail end of it and I, you know, I think a lot of people didn't actually realise what it entailed. And I think word of mouth, that that will be a really, a good event next year. And yeah, Eurovision party, why not? It seems to be more interesting, so hopefully on the big screen and that'd be really. Do you think King Charles, you know, moved his carnation, so King Charles in Eurovision?
Possibly, I can comment though, I don't know his diary workings. Brenda.
Yeah, I was going to say about the seaside special, I had that idea. You know, because a lot of children don't get to go into the sea, so I, you know, they're sitting on the TV and. You know, I just think that, that's a nice event. And that's for the marketplace, the Saturday market. I think they come to town and we have to say, you know, we need the marketplace. But when you've got like the vegetable man, when you go to the seaside, there's, you still have the stalls, don't you? So whether they will pack down what they've actually used in that day.
Yeah, I think when, when I, I mean, I have spoken to a couple of the traders and for instance. We talked yesterday about trying to make, or Dennis brought up the fact about the electric feeder pillars. And again, it, it, it's in the process, it's trying to be scheduled. There's contractor issues all over the place in terms of supply chains and things like that. So, but this is next year, so I mean, touch wood, fingers crossed, everything, you know, hopefully they'll be in place. Because Sharon, the fishmonger, actually said, oh, that's perfect for me. Because, you know, she can, you know, so, so I think you're right, we might be able to try and work with them. So, yeah, really, really keen to do that because we've, you know, we've got, we've already got puppets and things like that. So we can do an end of the pier type puppet show, you know, it's, and Katie's, Katie's lot are really keen to get involved and, you know, as they always are. So, so sort of the old end of the pier sort of variety type stuff in one of the evenings would be one of the things. So, yeah, really looking forward to that. But the idea is that if we have the sandpit underneath. Also during the year when we have the school and, and family activities during the summer holiday, you just take the lid off. And, you know, they can play in the sandpit and things like that, so.
Dennis.
I'm going to say Wilmington on sea.
Well, again, you know, again, you could have a tie-up with a dad's army and have a very similar event on one of the days, so.
I have visions of Captain Mannering without his hat on with a tied hanky on. Yeah, as long as he puts his uniform on. Absolutely, but like I say, there's, there's so much, it's warming too. So there's, there's, there's opportunity to do an incredible amount of partnership working here and that's what it's about. It's about, you know, providing events for residents, it's about increasing and improving the vibrancy of our town centre. Yes, I'm being mercenary, I'll declare the interest, I'm a shop owner, but I want to improve footfall. Because I don't want to be the only independent sitting out there. We have some fantastic units in the town and actually everybody says we need more. So this is our opportunity as a council to contribute towards that and make it vibrant. So it is more attractive to attract, you know, investors.
Can I also say that? One of, one of the reasons why we came up with the seaside special is because we would, we worked together with Breckland District Council with Screen on the Green. And even though it was their event, we, we were supporting them. And they, they purchased a load of deck chairs and things like that, so they've now sort of. We store them and we can use them whenever we want with their permission. So again, you know, it just fits in, yeah, so we've already got deck chairs and things like that, so. So I think, you know, we'll go back to Breckland and probably talk to them as well, whether they want to sort of add a little bit of value to it as well, you know, for some additional stuff. So it's really good, just to go back on the steampunk stuff, Brenda. The, Barbara, sorry, the, the feedback from that small event, because it was a small event for heritage, has been absolutely phenomenal. There was another event actually that we didn't know about because we've not really been in that steampunk scene in Great Yarmouth on the day. But several of them have chosen to come to ours and a couple of the organisers, Paul being one of them. Was so impressed with, with the facilities that he suggested that we make this an annual event and so did some of the traders. We've already had other traders that said, and they've said, as long as we do it around about this time. We won't affect the big ones, you know, the Lincolns, the Whitpies, where, because these, this is a community that almost travels around. And that way more people will come into the town. But we don't, because it's a very, I mean, I kept hearing people saying, what is steampunk? What is it all about? And when they were talking to them, they even still looked perplexed, they didn't really get it. So the reason, so I said to Katie, can we not just expand the Victorian aspect of it? Because lots of our heritage in the Guildhall is around that Victorian age with Charles Burrow and, you know, Minns and all the rest of it. So, so again, in terms, we can tell some stories, we can do some additional stuff and events. But they want to bring down a whole, you know, a whole shebang of, of activities and events. In, in fact, they will have a whole show in the Carnegie, which is an old time Victorian music hall show that they're going to put on. So, yeah, really excited by that, that could be really big. And if we can make that an annual thing, that would be really good.
Yes, Stuart.
I think that's pleasing to hear, because I was going to bring up, I think we needed to join, sow the seeds, get the message out there about steampunk to our locals. Want to say, this is what it's about, because there's a number of people, what was it all about? Didn't see much going on and we had stalls in the Guildhall and you think they weren't really getting as much footfall as what you hoped.
Yeah.
Because they, people didn't know about it, so I think if we can ramp up the, the media presence in my thought and lead up to it, I think that'll help. Couple of things is the idea of incorporating the market traders within our events, I think is great because. But yesterday's meeting, the idea, creating footfall, making them all vibrant and, and if we can get them to participate and have a thing. And also give them an idea of what's going on so that they can publicise our events to other markets where they go to. Because you might have people of interest saying, oh, I'm interested in this thing, oh, well, you might come on the Fetter because this is going on. And so we can give them a programme of stuff that we're doing.
Yeah.
They can be our ambassadors out there. And obviously early days in terms of the coronation, but you're going to have those discussions about whether we do something on the Saturday. And you don't know if it's bank holiday weekend, but it's being moved and all that. People will want to watch on television, so the opportunity there for the big screen to be utilised if, if we didn't do, if they didn't want to stay at home. So I think, you know, we'll leave that with you to develop further, but thanks.
To be honest, I didn't know what steampunk was, I thought it was like. So we had visions of, yeah, yeah, I thought steampunk was something to do with music. You know, like they had the punk rockers, but this was steampunk. And when I say this paper book, it's like that boss. Because you have to understand, if you've not brought up in that environment, why would you know of them? It was, the Saturday was absolutely brilliant, everybody, the Sunday seemed to be a bit, bit slower, didn't it?
Because we didn't think, we didn't think it would be that well received. So we sort of didn't have as much going on on the Sunday. And although, to be honest, you know, just going by tea room takings, it was as big as the Saturday. It was, so there was lots of people that came down. I think one of the other, one of the other draws that it always is, was the steam engines were out. So a, again, they're really keen to get involved. You talk about the stall holders in the, in the large corps. And I understand, yeah, we need to try and find a way of really driving footfall in there when we have craft fairs and things. But we've had several craft fairs and that has been one of the concerns that you sort of can't see them and where's the signage? We did have two big banners that now says craft stalls in the, in the Guildhall today. But I didn't hear one complaint from their stall holders, they were really, really pleased. And they were on the phone to others saying, you know, as a first event, it was really good. And they were one of the ones that were pushing for next year. In fact, some of those stall holders are coming back for Christmas, simply because, just to sell some wares.
Yes, of course, it's excellent, sorry.
Can I get mine?
Absolutely, Dennis. You indicate speaking this.
Um, two things, well, on the Sunday, I was down to see the, the thing, the punk.
Steampunk, yeah.
And I, I found it very interesting, I mean, I knew a little bit about it because I'd seen some detective things with the punk hotel. But it was really interesting. But the other thing, there was, the Royal British Legion did a much better trade that day. They were throwing in and, and so it, there is some. Everybody is gaming from it. And the other thing, going back to the beach, our, our seafront thing. If I get into one of those chairs, there's going to be anybody to help me out.
We can risk assess that and do that for Dennis, yeah. We've all done manual handling training, it's okay. Jen, is there anything you'd like to add?
Brian, Brian and Gav, he's brilliant.
Yeah, the team is of course.
Paula, is there anything you'd like to add to it? Okay. Yeah.
On the heritage day, we're doing, looking at the research of the house, who's lived here, when it was done. Yeah, yeah, and, and little bits about that person that's lived here. On what they've actually done in the town, like Mr Wodehouse, he done the bridge at, so. Who paid for that and there's certain different things that they've done, or where they've worked and that. So we've been working on that now for months, months, months. And because we said to the town clerk. That maybe the house needs more promotion. On heritage and then we probably suggested was we've got this history bits together. Get some pictures of the can and just make it like a story. And put some of the stuff out for the heritage weekend, the steps under, yes, in the town room. And then. And use, use down the stairs as well, just to put something out in the lobby.
There's absolutely the opportunity and, and as you'll be aware, I've done a couple of exhibitions in here.
Yeah.
Before Covid, yeah, my votes for women are still up on the pitches, apologies. But obviously we did the, the, the Thetford females, as it were, the women of Thetford. Both the civic side of things, you know, the history of some of the, the ladies estates and their impact locally. And then we also did a literary Thetford because there's a lot of links there and that was even before bookshop. But there are those opportunities and I know the town clerk absolutely welcomes anybody that wants to put together a display and that kind of thing. So my suggestion would be, do it.
Downstairs in the big room, right, in the big room, all because you have people coming in. You know, I mean, you always have a member staff, so it's a big, quite safe. But if they was downstairs and then around the room, you've got the history of the house. Like, because we always all, you know, it was the, the, it was King's House, that's why I call it King's House. Now, actually, Elizabeth, it is Queen Elizabeth, not a lot of it, then we built it.
Women always.
And but it's finding out that history, putting it up and people can see that as well. Plus Stanfors book, which is part of Stanfors.
What I would say is, go for it, embrace it. I know Dennis is always incredibly supportive on Heritage Open Days with his talks on the regalia. I know you, you've done wandering around the town as Thomas Wayne in the past. So we've, we've always gotten involved, so absolutely. And then let's have a look at how we can, you know, tell those stories of both the house and the town. It'll be interesting to see what the theme is coming up next year and perhaps how possibly we can adapt or tie that in. And obviously that, that history of the house will be a new event that goes on, so that'd be quite exciting to do. Obviously, continue conversations with the town clerk and, yeah, let's get it ready for when that brochure gets put together in what, April? May time, something like that, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Stuart.
Just relevant to that, I'm actually hosting the previous chief executive English Heritage coming tomorrow. And he wants to have a look around King's House, so he may, I will have a chat with you afterwards, so, provided what you've got. But he may be looking into something else which we could, if he's doing a book or something like that, we might be able to leaf that up. For that display, so I'll speak to you later.
Dennis.
It's a detailed thing, but if we move the regalia downstairs and do it and, and come with the, with the history of the house, which I think is a brilliant idea to do. We then leave out our mayorship and that is one big part of our history.
I think that's, that's, that's kind of getting down into the weeds of what this item is, is the strategic overview. Obviously, discussion is, you know, ongoing, David, do you want?
Well, I, I, all I would say is, the, the, this is, this is our civic home, if you like. So I think the regalia should be in here. The other thing to touch on is that those rooms might not be available.
For the corridor, please, so.
The corridor will be, as a community.
Well, yeah, there's to be up here, we could be, oh no, we don't want to be against it. In the corridor, you could, you could turn around and direct people up here.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
What you see and then bring them up.
But the history, the building downstairs and then.
So I think appropriate use of space that will be available at the time is the phrase from that one. So, as per this outline, I'm, I'm intrigued about Halloween weekend, actually, that hasn't been mentioned. So it's out scaring children.
So the, so this upcoming Halloween, they've got something that they've classed as Thetford dungeons, which will, which is almost like a scary tour of the Guildhall. So you'll be going into each of the four main rooms and. Well, I, I, I've not, I don't really know, I don't, well, I don't really know too much. I know what will happen in one of the rooms and I said, stop, don't tell me anymore because I'm going to bring my granddaughters, I want to buy tickets, so don't spoil it for me. But it is going to be various different scary stories within each of the rooms, which is the, and we're not. But it is going to be various different scary stories within each of the rooms, which is the, and we're not using the T room as such. We're going to hopefully, we're trying, trying to put the marquee up on the market square. Because we've bought these big anchor weights. So you'll be able to come in for refreshments into the marquee, then into the building. So we can use the Guildhall T room, the Large Court, the Council Chamber and the Upper Gallery. Um, and the idea is to scare the life out of you, but also tell you some fascinating stories. Uh, because some of them are, are based on, you know, real life. It's not for the really little kids. But I'm not, I'm not being funny, but some of the stories Katie and Amber tells me when they come back from school visits, kids, kids, you, you can't frighten kids. You know, they, they love the fact, the fact that they're hang drawn and quartered and things like that. They love the, the gory stuff. So, um.
I think it's, when you're saying the moon is up, that's what scares some kids. It's not, it's not the story. They're sitting in the story because they love it, you know. But when it, when it, if they're going into a room and all of a sudden something, something jumps out at them. I mean, my granddaughter went to Hertfordshire, she's gone through something, she screamed that place down, all the guards, and she was being kidnapped.
It's not going to be primeval. Just, just saying, don't worry. Um, but yeah, it's, the line up's looking absolutely fantastic for that. So any other questions on heritage and town events? Coming up next year, the marketplace events? Are we happy to pursue that with the caveat that we kind of need to also be aware of coronation arrangements and start thinking about the art of the possible within that? Is that enough for you, David?
Yeah.
Lovely. Thank you so much for, you know, taking on board what the committee had asked for and, yeah, running with it. Rather exciting.
These next two ones are really open for discussion.
So, um, the next agenda item is committee priorities for financial year twenty twenty three, twenty four. The agenda item is to discuss and agree committee priorities and i- identify the appropriate funding. Um, last meeting, as you'll see, on minute item five, uh, two, five, two. We, um, discussed and agreed the committee priorities. Um, we had four of them. Priority one was to promote and encourage community engagement with the coordinated delivery of town events. I'm kind of feeling that the plans that we've got coming forward are demonstrating that already. Um, priority two, create an exciting and varied programme of accessible town events. Um, and we've also, yeah, and, and, and some of those are free at the point of use, which is, you know, significant. And I think the other side of things is potentially that seaside experience. If we're mindful that, you know, potentially people aren't going to get holidays and that kind of thing, you know, we're, we're bringing some sort of light relief into the town. Priority three, to promote and develop the Thetford heritage offer. And then priority four, celebrate the civic and twinning links and explore the social and economic opportunities that they bring. Appropriate funding for twenty twenty three, twenty four to be partly funded by the Heritage Master Plan. But I'm also mindful that the next agenda item is going, well, next one is also going to be the, um, forecast budget that we're going to look at. So I'll open the floor for negoti-, uh, for, for discussion. Are we happy with those four priorities as they stand? Can we demonstrate what we're going to do? I mean, some of those we've already identified in terms of the budget conversation that we're about to have come up. So they will dovetail in. What else do you want? Or is there something you want to get rid of? Over to you, team. Let's not just make you all happy because it's a lie. Yes, Dennis.
The four priorities you outlined, and, and, I think they're very good and they cover the heritage side. And I think in conjunction with what we're doing, the heritage, I think we've covered it all. I'm happy with it.
Yeah. So, I mean, some of the hot stuff, you know, supports that Thetford heritage offer. We've covered, you know, the Victorian side of things and then weaving those threads through. And I think it's important that we get those, we want to put a phrase, golden threads coming through everything that we do. So we go, does that help that?
I mean, again, with the heritage, it's taking in not just the council, it's taking in, uh, you know, with the standing for trust. I'm sure that we could probably get that army involved in it somewhere along the line. And I think it's brilliant.
Super. And on that note, Stuart.
Yeah, just David, we talked about getting some pop-ups for regalia and so with your kind of event, you can quickly put those up. Adds to the, you know, offer of the Guildhall, but it necessarily has to be, I'll be with heritage, I think. Is that still, uh, available funding that is in this budget or is it?
Well, I think we still have, we still have a little bit of money left in the, um, the Guildhall Heritage Hub budget. So as long as we can tie in and it can be with things that can, you know, associate themselves with the, with the Guildhall, then, yeah, we could get most of it out of there. So, um, I'll have to try and push that up the list of things to do.
What can we do better?
Well, till, till we've done what we've got down to do, we can improve it because we don't know. But I, I think it all sounds good. It says like positive.
Carla.
People who want to work, mention the age to really determine what's the leadership of the twin links and beyond can develop.
Here they have businesses within the town. And we need to somehow make them feel part of the the whole community we've got. Um. So I think this is opens up into a broader thing rather than just the twin channels we've got.
Okay, so with that in mind. Um. And bearing in mind that Brenda, you also wanted to bring together a working group. I'm mindful that there is experience outside of this committee as well. And would this committee be so minded to have to request some support?
See, everything I'm gonna say, you're saying it before.
You didn't even text me, sorry. Great minds, great minds.
Yeah, because I I I think you're right. Um. The town has no money for twinning. When you go to these uptowns, they have money. The money is put aside just for that twinning. So, say for example, we said to the schools, oh, the council will pay for all, you know, the children that you want to send. Over to Poland or Germany to learn about some so, some so, right? We don't have that then resources. But getting together with um people that are invested, just for example, businesses, you know. And you're you're taking students from school that are going to learn from it. And the swimming galas, we always used to have the swimming galas out.
We still do.
We still do.
And I'm really proud to be attending the latest gala.
So it's where the working group is not the town council, it's a couple of people from the town council. Plus, the external bodies, because we can't do anything. We haven't got the resources that they have.
Okay, so the next meeting of the Teford Business Forum is the ninth of December. That will be their Christmas meeting. So I suppose that we don't leave it that late to engage with them. I will happily write to the chairman. Um. On this committee's behalf, if you wish.
Yeah.
And say, you know, let's get some stuff going on. I think that'll be really interesting in terms of. Um. Sustainability and um renewable energies and that side of things. Because there is an incredible amount of interest in that locally, and we've got some quite good champions on that, so that could be worthwhile. Um. And we can explore on on that side of things. So who would want to be on the working group? Because I'm mindful of it being. Succinct, snappy, but delivering.
Well, most Carla being at the time committing is. Quite happy to sustain them.
Okay, so Carla and Stuart, are you happy with that, Con? Is that what you were indicating for?
They they're because they're so well demanded already. We have our own time. It's now we have seen the council today in this way. They're all just shattering comments. My colleagues, they're actually very anxious. They're busy doing work. And they have a network of businesses that positively. I mean, because of the board, it's for them. It's all contacts of major businesses. And you said about red energy renewables. It's because pollution noise is the first country in Europe to be much. Too weak in the weather when we have a storm. From from yes, they often the majority of the energy we is produced um as green energy. They are. Um. Basically, almost independent from this way. They are one country that does nothing against anyone because they have fans and they they are always. Green energy and and all the stuff that's going on, like very much of that they is, they don't talk about the problem. So they are from these countries, they are now trying to pass on that knowledge of how they went about reaching that that zero. Um. To before, the same one that we did, we have some brain. Um. To our countries, and this is such a nice combination. It's often in the air, so it's a big link to us. The common is British companies. And we're supposed to always call it as long as we want, then we come. And there are the touch, this is, you know, we're presented this long with people there is. Um. We often get those those contacts. The other thing is, I just want to give you a little bit of the history here. The poor state is, while they must see the best, but since there's more years, and the status there remains the same. The council, the council itself, which is just close to the place, my home, sorry. Post, um also changed over seven four years. I just received the invite for the international council. So I will be in London on the twenty first, talking to these groups and these associations. There's a possibility that coming to this idea of them, or group of them, with some of their representatives. And they come here, of fact, to take some of ourselves, some colleagues from the council. Over there to visit and try to discuss this. I can't necessarily think about. But obviously, I believe now when I start from, I think that's the point of the working group is going to be necessary. Because that's got to be a plan for me to be now moving on with.
So I'm very, very mindful that actually, we are not in a position to. Deliver policy, deliver anything, to be perfectly honest with you. And that is a key issue when you say, well, we want to sit at that table, and they say, well, what can you do? Well, ultimately. We are a piddly little town council who are relatively insignificant in that world. What we can do is facilitate and enable and utilise our connections, and I think that's the key aspect. Um. And that, yeah, obviously, we have connections that go far beyond this council chamber. So I think it's being mindful of what we can bring to the table, what we can influence, shape and support. Whilst it sounds fabulous for this town council, have representatives go over to Portugal to look at renewable energy. What we're gonna do, yeah, but what are we gonna do with it? We are in no place to to do that, so. The facilitation, absolutely, but the actual delivery, I think we need to be mindful and realistic about how much we can do. And the conversations that I I think we need to be having, and and I think, if I understood correctly. You picked up on those, is that facilitation of matching, yeah, business X to business X in those different countries where where we can. Absolutely.
And as we develop, we then we now may eventually. The information has been business. Um. You have the document on it.
Which it would it would be nice, but no. Yeah.
I think it's there, that's why you need all different bodies around that table. You you know, small example, you you've got the children in the infant school. And most of them are used to tactics in on some form. Why might be that whole class doing with a class in Skavina or anywhere, you know, and and that is out there. Getting the contacts to to, you're getting that contact in the school to school, because you don't have to, you know. Basically, was it?
And environmentally, it's a lot better to do it virtually than it is to physically move. But there's but there's an opportunity for both. I think we're starting to stray into the working groups area now. Um. Because if we're going to set that, or it sits within this committee outside of a working group and sits within this committee. And it becomes a regular piece that we have on the agenda that we deal with.
I think the working group will hopefully go out and do it by getting people involved. Then then just be back work.
Okay, so my proposal would be then in that case to to form a working group. Do we want to open up membership of that to the whole council at the next full council meeting to get volunteers on that? With with a focus on having an initial um scoping report. Presented back at this, the next meeting of this committee, so that we can then go, yes, that works, no, that doesn't. What's the art of the possible? How's that sound?
Do you think? But when's the next one?
December.
Yeah, no, December.
December, because it's the wash up of the remembrance. Yeah.
Yeah.
December. So we'll present, we'll request, we're having gender item on full council. Because you can say that, that's what we're giving, isn't it? We're having the gender item on full council requesting volunteers, and again, with the focus that will keep it. Snappy, focused and results driven. You know, the focus on what we can do and what we can influence rather than, wouldn't it be nice to? But it's not realistic. Does that sit okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll take that away as an action point to put on the next agenda. Super. So. Coming back to the 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 substantial item, committee priorities for the financial year twenty twenty three, twenty four. Okay, and and tie in the existing budget lines as we've already identified. Um. And then obviously, we'll see where the discussions take us. Because it is going to be a long term plan in terms of civic and twinning, um, social and economic opportunities. I'm also mindful that come May, this council changes. So we we will be, I don't want to set up anything that commits them too hard. But at the same time, we want to enable them and facilitate their discussions.
But it's good. Yes, but it is, it's. Bible that it will just swing through anyway. So it's not, there's not be any really big hurdles or anything so for the new council in May. It should be a smooth running anyway.
Yeah.
It it values one of their persons from that working group get elected. It doesn't stop the people that was interested staying on that committee.
And 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 you're absolutely right and highlighted it earlier that it's actually bigger than the council.
Yeah.
We we just need to support that and enable it and facilitate again. Okay, are we all happy that we've resolved that ontem? Happy with that, David?
Yep.
Super. So we then go on to ironically, environment strategy contribution. Committee to consider and propose actions and projects to support the wider council environment strategy. And to agree, actions and projects to support environment strategy contribution, well, we're just not overseas travel on the head, so. Yay for the carbon win there. Um. But in all seriousness, over to you, committee. Are there any suggestions that have come out from discussions?
No.
And I'm not entirely sure how we can, I mean.
I think some of the items, the town events, David, you've covered in yesterday's meeting, you got environmental use of, you know. Not plastic and.
Yeah.
Yeah. And all that kind of stuff. So whether we repeat that element of here, because you use those venues, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, most, yeah. Most of the town events are outside events, so it's just making that.
I suppose because we're we're. We could have our hours that, following the town council's lead on, you know, the. Reusable um stuff and the carbon and all that. And that we will try to get people that do events to do the same thing, says that. I don't know. If you've got the pump, what's it saying, you know, is there any way you can, you can ask, but it's us trying to promote that. I don't know.
And I'm kind of wondering if we want to be focused on. The side of things of local, um, sustainable, so we reduce the travel. And that impact that that can have, and obviously that will have a budgetary and monetary effect, an impact on on those traders, so, you know. At market stall holders, um, for the events that we invite or, you know, what we do, we're just mindful that they are delivered. Yeah, with the minimal environmental impact. So no polyester guys for the Eurovision. Because microplastics just rubbing off our bouncing. Only if it's vintage and you're reusing and haven't bought new. There we go. Yeah, don't ask us too quickly.
I I think the steam party is the most environmentally friendly event, because everything is re, you know, it's sourced from charity shops and reused, yeah.
Any other thoughts on that?
That's more of a benefit.
I mean, is there. An opportunity. In terms of marketplace events to ensure that we invite. Yeah, people like rap and those sort of people who are engaged with that education piece. In terms of sustainability, waste reduction, that kind of thing, and perhaps build them into that.
Right, it's called the event.
Yeah.
Never on the seaside event.
Well, actually, you've got an opportunity within the seaside event to highlight, you know, the plastic pollution within our oceans and rivers. You know, we've got two rivers in the heart of our town. Why aren't we challenging those thoughts? Why aren't we getting the church tribe to come in and do some junk art modelling as well? So you reuse there, but also educational pieces, you know, there's some fantastic books around. About the impact on our oceans, about the plastic that we do. And it's an opportunity, it doesn't detract from that event, but it's that educational piece and awareness. Over to you.
I think that's a good point, and I think because whatever goes in our river flows out to sea. So, you know, I think you've got a big angle there you can go for. And you had these beach pickup stuffs, and you maybe get somebody to come along to do that, you know, link to it. But I think that links to it also is relevant to the various events that you've got going on. Inviting this thing, because you don't want the same person coming each time.
Hmm.
Um. But if you've got something like that, I think that's a really good idea.
I'm trying to think where I went, and this man is an inviting list. It's absolutely fantastic. I'd love to drive by and go, but he loves to come and do that because he does it all. But he, that, you know, that's, he's in Norfolk. I'm I guess I'm getting it wrong.
The the environment strategy is council wide. It's allow us, we as a committee can contribute towards that. And, you know, I think there's some opportunities there for education. I mean, certainly like that you already said. That there was a fantastic workshop, wasn't there, by the lady who was reusing and recycling fabrics for corsets and all sorts of stuff? So, you know, that whole mantra of reduce, reuse, recycle. Reducing and reusing are the first two. The recycling's the last bit, you know, that's what happens when we can't do anything else with it. But those, you know, reducing amount of waste that we produce, which has Stuart and David have said, you know, has been identified in terms of. You know, what we do, um. Reuse, we can focus on those elements perhaps and, you know, being in those bits and pieces, but obviously. On an event by event basis, you know, someone like the um, you know, for the seaside special. Potentially, you could have one of the um organisations and charities that do deal with. Yeah, the coastal impacts and that kind of thing. And, yeah, it's also an education piece. But make people aware that, you know, there's a bit more to than just, you know, punching Judy and a really nice ice cream in the deck chair, you know, that.
Really can be made a problem.
Absolutely, and there's so much that you can do from from a standpoint of view as well.
It's a it must seem about enough it's in the sea.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, yeah, I think there's there's an opportunity, again, for us to facilitate the contacts and that kind of thing and pull that through. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Super, right. So we then move on to three eight six. Which is heritage and town events budget. So you've had all of those wonderful ideas, and now we get to look at what it actually. Looks like in reality and go, okay.
So actually, um, over the last few years, we've done really well to um. To sort of. Revise and reassess our budget within our budget. So we've reduced costs by doing lots of our catering in house, for instance. Um. So by and large, this committee doesn't really need to increase its budget for next year. What I would like to do, and if you look at the sheet, is just to tweak it slightly and put different amounts in. Um, in in different boxes, simply because the historic data shows that we continually don't. Spend that amount, that level of um allocated budget. Um. But it also frees up some, uh, so it identifies and frees up money. Um, to have a couple of contingency pots. So if you look at civic events. Um, four hundred pounds for to to deliver a a reception after Battle of Britain in Remembrance is more than enough. Um. But we have a, last year we had a pot of three thousand, or this year, three thousand five hundred and sixty. Um. It it allows us to put fifteen hundred pounds into a contingency. So if things like the um King Charles III's coronation. Comes about, um. Then we've got something that we can dip into. So I think that's that's viable. And also, right at the end, you've got budget contingency. So when we just did the calculations, uh, we still had an eight hundred and eighty eight pounds contingency. So let's just put it into a contingency box. So we don't have to have the conversations about. Okay, so we we really want to to do something with a heritage trail leaflet or something like that. Where are we going to get it from? Well, we've got our own little contingency pot that we can we can dip into. So, uh, unless we're really keen to um expand all the things that we do and we need more money to do it. I think the budget that we've already got, if we replicate that next year, we have got enough to deliver what we're talking about. I'll try to in the uh final right hand column to break it down. For the headline budgets into allocated sub budgets for the particular um aspects of that area. So Mayor making civic reception, right down to the marketplace events and Christmas lights, et cetera, et cetera. So you know how those headline budget numbers are are broken down. But they're all historically um realistic. Uh, we've done them before with, you know, as I said, over the years, we've we've not spent some of it. Um. So we don't really need to add any more to it. We've got quite adept at saving costs in this one.
Over to you, guys.
I think that's the good idea.
Dennis.
Yeah, you know, uh, well, yeah, it, we're going to be under extreme pressures next year, uh, for the next few years. On budget, so we can hold a budget that's, I think, very acceptable.
And I and I think the key issue is is probably the. Largest amount to spend within our budget is what we do for the town.
Town.
It's it's free and accessible at that point of use for our residents. And I think that is the key message that needs to go out from this, that that's what we are doing for you. This is our attempt to support the vibrancy of our community. And this is how we do it. And if you want to join us on the ride, that would be fantastic. I know we've had lots of offerings of. Of support, volunteers, that kind of thing. So we need to just make sure that we we harness that people power as well. Um. I do have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Why are we including the mayor's Christmas party for the elderly? Because previously we've gone out and found that money elsewhere.
Right.
I get that it's a fantastic community thing and it it supports some of our most vulnerable and lonely. People out there, especially after the last couple of years that we've had, but why are we including it within that place?
The conversation internally is that we we also, as as um staff. Really think it's a good idea and lots of staff are committed to helping uh that event. Um. But we're we're fearful that um. That it might get lost. So the challenge to me was, can we find that and dedicate that as a um budget line? So we make it part of our um mayor and civic um programme, whereas at the moment it's not. If if, you know, if we don't identify that as something that we really want to do as a council. When it gets tough, it's an easy one to 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 hack. Um, just to try and. Expand what you've just said about, because if you look at the top section, which is income, there is nothing in it. Um. Now, I understand the merit income's different because the income that the mayor generates through civic balls and other events that specifically to to them. It goes to their charities, but the civic income, so a conversation yesterday in venues and um communications. We also talked about events and we talked about um. Some of the events that we do inside, so Christmas lights in in. In our terms is all on the marketplace and outside and all the rest of it. But we'll also have some additional events inside, which are venue events. But we are attracting sponsorship now, which for a long, long time we haven't been able to do. There's lots of them coming out. And Stuart, because, you know, Stuart's Chair of V and C, but he's also Vice Chair of this committee, turned around and said, well, actually, if you're getting sponsorship for. Uh, town events or elements of town events, where does the income sit? Because I'd put it into V and C. So maybe we should look at, if it's exclusively a town event that we're getting sponsorship for, it should go in here. So the thing is, Jane, if we can secure sponsorship, we don't have to commit the two thousand pounds. Um. But because we've got it in there, um, we've got that option to use it. Within our budget, so we don't lose it, we don't lose that opportunity. But I think more more often than not, it's not going to cost the council two thousand pounds, because there's lots. There's lots of groups and bodies and um supporters that are going to almost pay for that. It's just if things got really, really tough and they didn't. That would go from the um, from our programme, because we we technically haven't allocated any money to it. So it's, again, it's another contingency. It's not to say that we have to spend it. But we've allocated and identified that's something we really want to do for our elderly residents. But if we can find it by sponsorship and support, absolutely brilliant.
Fabulous. Um. And then I have one other question. Um. The honorary awards has been up slightly to cover hospitality.
Yes.
In previous years, we've done that within the mayor's civic reception, which already has a budget. So are we just increasing the line for the sake of it? I know it's a very small line. So is that really necessary?
So what we've done is we've increased it again to specifically give us um the opportunity to provide some kind of hospitality uh to that. Um. But as you see, the bottom line is it hasn't changed. So I've I've sort of taken it from Peter to Paypool, so to speak. So um it's it's just so we know, there's no um. There's no clouding of the budgets. Where's that hospitality coming from? Well, it's coming from this, and we've got. Seventy five, fifty quid to spend on teas, coffees and biscuits and cake and things, so.
Team, anything else, please?
Yeah, I remember we do the the catering in house, but cost wise, the the cost of ingredients and supplies are, you know, increasing.
They are.
Yeah, the other basis, I mean, is it the price, is it realistic that, you know, it's cost up next year, we're we're gonna get a pro.
So, um.
They're mostly too bad.
So the mayor's civic reception is allocated twelve hundred pounds just for the mayor's civic reception. And to be honest, um, again.
This is then. No, it's cheap skate.
It 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 was, it was hundreds, not not over the thousand pounds. So again, we've got, this is a, you know. We have made significant savings. So we've, at this moment in time, we've got the, we've got the margin to increase within our budget. Um. Whether we can do that in future years, that's not going to happen. But I think for this committee that has got a generous budget and we're not hitting it at this time, it would be a great. It would be great for this committee to say to the process of budget setting for next year, we don't need to increase for the sake of it.
Brenda.
Um. I know I guess an electric, I didn't explain it, that's frozen at the moment. But when they say it's frozen, is the standard charge frozen as well?
But that's not with.
That's not within this committee, but for clarity.
Yeah, no, I'm getting to, I'm trying to get to.
For clarity, we had a fixed term deal for three years, which will expire next summer.
I said, I know, so what I'm getting at is what. I'm saying the story, what I'm getting at is what Barford saying is right, because it's all right saying. You've got all this for this price, but do take into account that the, you know, this has to be cooked as well.
Yeah.
You know, uh, yeah, I'm just saying.
That comes from the energy lines within the budget, which will be incredibly interesting looking at come. Next week's meeting. Um. And then obviously, we will have that process of tendering. Next year that we will have to go to because that deal will be at an end.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you you started on the installation works, haven't you, yesterday at the Carnegie? So that will have, hopefully, a considerable impact. But yes, those those direct costs are not.
Yeah, I I think what I'm getting is what Barford saying is, it's not just your your ingredients and, you know, the work run into it. It's then the the bills behind it. Because people say, oh, you know, this cost me this, that to make. So I say, well, you know, how did you do that? Well, I had one egg, this, that, that, that. And and so I can charge this, I said, but. But you've actually used yesterday to do that, you haven't put that in there.
Yeah, but we do though. We do, we we do, we.
That's that's my question, I mean, that's what I did, it's the only bad way of saying it. Go quite a time to say it's Barford saying it's right, it's better to leave it there because we don't know. That's if we can get it next year.
Rehome some battery hens, there's a room, perhaps standing for the trust would like us to have a free range thing out there, obviously undercover. Currently, because. Currently because of, free range but undercover currently, obviously. Um, any further questions on the proposed budget for next year? In that case, do we have a proposer to recommend this to the finance com committee, please? Thank you, councillor Cannon. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor Barretto. Do all those in favour? Unanimous. Super. Thank you very much. So on to three eight seven twenty two, community engagement, discuss and agree, any consultation or media release required. Um, hopefully you've all seen the recent Merrill stuff that's gone out regarding the Christmas car competition. Um, we are reiterating that, that's that's getting repeated, um. In terms of the Halloween stuff, which isn't one of our town events this year, but will be next year. That's uh received considerable um coverage. So thank you to the comms team on that one. Is there anything that we need to do or do we need to start thinking? What are we doing about Christmas? And taking on board the comments that were made earlier about being clear about what we're offering.
Barbara, I think we should get the information about Christmas lights shut. So not as quick as, as quickly as possible, so they can get in their dimes and.
Absolutely. And and how are we liaising with the local retailers?
So, um, that's something that Hazel's doing uh as part of the whole um programme of Christmas light switch on. So, um, she's currently off on sick leave at the moment, but she'll be back next week and um and we can push her on that. She has got some of the information out about Christmas, but we're ramping it up as we go. We've already had stall holders, well, quite a few stall holders that have booked but spots on Christmas lights. And, I mean, even you were saying you booked your Santa's um visit for your grandchildren. So, um, it's getting out there, but we'll ramp that up as well. Um. But we are also, um, again, the next phase of the Guildhall Heritage Hub, um, is we're starting to look at that last piece of the jigsaw. Uh, which is the um Tulip Maraj Aranjip Singh and Dulip Singh Room, that's a better. Um, anyway, um, so we're now looking at um doing some of the uh work around. Deciding what kind of exhibits and things like that we're going to have in there. So again, that might be something that we can put out to to people to tell them what we're doing. Yeah.
So next, um, Saturday is the twenty second of October. It's the anniversary of the death day of Maraj Dulip Singh. Um, there is a commemoration service happening over at um St Andrews and St Patrick's. I've got that round the right way, haven't I? Was it St Patrick's and the Andrews Church, the church at Eldon, um, where the graves are. Obviously, I'll be attending on your behalf as mayor. Um, I believe, Stuart, you've had an invite come through from Peter. If not, it's fine to you. Um, so obviously, if you would like to join us at the graveside, you'd be very much more than welcome because it is a significant aspect of. Um, our heritage locally. Um, and then obviously the other side of things is, um. Remembrance, how could I forget those words?
Remembered, yeah.
Um, so perhaps working in conjunction with, um.
Royal Bridge.
Royal Bridge Legion and just, you know, make sure that we get our messages out there and and remind people what's what and how. Um, in terms of the Dulip Singh stuff, that's not something that we want to push out because effectively that's um Peter Bance's.
Yeah.
Organisation a bit. That's as if I knew. There you go. So, yeah, see, heads up, working in conjunction, facilitating partnership, there we go. Um, so is there anything else that we need to get out to our community? Yeah, and I think enabling, and to go back to the businesses, but. I've just done my through to post-Christmas um scheduling for the staff. So I know other places will be looking at doing that as well. And also, you know, being mindful that people, some people will want to have time or some people won't and just, yeah, facilitating that. So I think that's important.
I don't, we can't do anything here at this moment because we have no information on Charles's due coming up. But we we'll need to get information out on that as soon as possible.
Once we know what we're doing.
Doing, yes.
Because we can't put anything out there till we know what we're doing. Once, once, you know, a bit more information has come through, then obviously. And that is for this committee to decide what we're doing. So, yeah, consider that they early heads up. Um, and, yeah, get your thinking hats on, ready for the next meeting in December and work out what, you know, the art of the possible is on that scenario. Okay, anything else on that point? Then we'll move on to three eight eight, which is committee officers update. Have you got anything else you'd like to add, David? Well done. Super. So I declare this meeting closed. Thank you all very, very much for your time and all your contributions. I think it's been very worthwhile. Thank you.